Ask for any nominations?
I have a nomination if you're asking.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Richard Riley as Chair.
Second.
That would be me. I'll do it. Alright, so I have a nomination to elect myself as the Chair person from there. And the second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries three, zero, one. All abstain from that. And I'll make a motion to nominate Laura as Vice Chair. Are you willing to do it again? I will make that motion to...
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Laura, I'm sure abstains.
Yes, I do.
So we have another three, zero, one. So we now have our offices for the current term.
Tell them clerk.
We wrote the term right out of the bylaws.
Okay.
That was a good idea.
Yeah.
You don't even see the word clerk anymore.
Did you appoint me on the board by the way? Did you know that?
That's true.
Uh, yes, I did. You might not have heard me though, I did appoint Greg upon the board.
Okay.
Before the camera started.
I was going to pick up in the microphone or something. Can I speak louder?
So, if we could just wait a little while.
Can we go over any of the procedural stuff? I don't know if people review the statutes that you've...
Yeah, can you explain it to us?
They have the new statutes.
I read through it quickly. Um, but typically, I don't like to get too, too deep, you know...
It's for a section here?
Right, but the procedural part as well, I, you know, was just trying to familiarize myself with that, too.
Okay.
Probably should wait for this to turn into...
Yeah, I would assume he's going to have some input there, too.
So this is the substantive part of it.
That's the thing he sent us, right?
Yes, and this is procedural... Well, he put it in his cover letter, I think, that we should be aware of this because this requires certain notice requirements that we need to make sure that we did before we hear the case.
Oh, really?
So we needed... Let me...
Sure.
Um, we needed at least fourteen days prior to the public hearing. We were supposed to notify by certified mail all affected municipalities and the Regional Planning Commission of the date, time, and place of the hearing and the right to testify.
So what are the affected municipalities?
I didn't see the full application to know where the property is located, but I think it's Hudson.
Hudson, but could it... Who is the property?
I don't know.
So what is the... The bottom line of this is to ensure that these border properties get, say, they get visibility from both sides of the border?
Yes, because that you can have a joint hearing, like if you have a piece of property, your own property that's in two municipalities, there's certain ways you can treat that boundary line, the municipality boundary line, and that's what the statute's about. But before you do that, you need to make sure that you notify the affected municipalities, and I'm not sure what exactly where the property is located, but that would be a consuming Hudson. I think you may have said Nashville, I'm not sure. And then you have to notify by certified mail the Regional Planning Commission.
Isn't that... Oh, the Regional Planning Committee, that's different.
That's... So we have to, that's a notice requirement before we can hear the case, and we have to notify by certified mail.
Which we probably didn't do.
I do not know.
Yeah. So we might have to delay this anyways because of those...
To make sure we...
With the right thing?
Have the proper notice requirements.
Makes sense. It's nice to have you be able to translate for us, Laura.
It's no easy trial.
So some of those, the wording is like, what are you just... Just tell us what you're trying to say.
You're trying to inform the local... Do just as well.
Playing me, playing me, which would be profitable in the matter.
Okay, so...
But that's what I'm saying, I don't know, but this is a personal matter, but any municipal, affected municipalities, we need to know that line. So I'd rather move by more, just to be on the safe side, unless, so we've been working at it.
Hudson, sure.
This is Hudson right here?
Yeah, that's what it says.
Oh, Hudson, yep, and then...
So New Hampshire DOT was notified. Town of Hudson was notified.
Why the DOT? Are they owners?
Uh, these were all the pre-printed labels that they wanted, so it was all on the list of abudders.
Okay.
Plus additional notice, so National Regional, also the Town of Hudson.
So it looks like he tried to inform me to do that.
Town of Hudson, Town of Litchfield. Estate of Leo Flurry. Wilson Farnes.
No, I drove with myself.
Adeline Genring.
I know, you can tell.
The engineering firm was notified.
Ninety degrees.
National Regional Planning Commission was notified. Okay, so...
Hello? Nashville.
Town of Nashville was not notified, it wasn't on the list.
National Regional was? I kind of think it should have been, because the river doesn't count as a...
Me, too.
We're asking Andy, Andy, do some more comments.
National Regional was, right?
National Regional was.
Yeah.
Which, is that one portion? And that was just affected municipalities was the other piece of the cover letter, and we need to make sure that we did everything.
Estate planning? If I had something to plan with, I would give it to you.
I don't want to, I'm just going to give you advice of how to plan if you want.
You know my good advice for my financial planner, I can...
Yeah, I got some... I got plans. All you do is spend it before you die, that's the key, that's the estate planning.
You gotta have enough to spend, though.
I am going to make my headstone. My headstones are all set to go when I go, when I do...
Which side are you going to be on? This side or this side?
On the other side. Okay? And I'm going to be in the back there. But it's going to be down there, it's going to say Kevin Lynch, and you're going to walk up to it, and you go, please step to the right, blocking my light.
That's cool. I like that idea. I like that idea.
That's... You go up, you look, oh, that's nice, what?
That is a good one.
Yeah, we're ready. I forgot we had the camera rolling.
How's your son?
Oh, he's pretty late.
Is he?
Yeah, he has, it's been a week since he...
Yeah, about a week.
He's all wrapped up. Well, a little wrapped with his mother's. Had a bad day.
Don't we have any air conditioning?
Huh?
Are you trying to cook us in here? Don't we have any AC?
Hey, we're not supposed to spend money.
I've been here all day, drilled it.
Isn't that the budget?
That's right, it's not in the budget.
Well, let me just put it on auto, and set air conditioning...
Kevin's got... Kevin's got all the budget.
That's true.
Okay, so I think we've given Alice sufficient time at this point, so I have to say that we're one shy of five for tonight.
I have to... I'm sorry.
Did you learn that? You learned that?
Let me know that Kevin took roll call.
First Memorial School, AKA Litchfield School.
We've all been there.
There was nine years in that school, I can tell you about. Supposed to be eight.
Alright, so at this time, I'll call, uh, Case 2014-01. Um... Yeah, I know, my glasses are not here now.
Better read it first.
Read it first?
Sure. If you wouldn't mind. That's the cover letter.
The name of the applicant is Leonard Vigent, address 5 Mockingbird Lane, Hudson, New Hampshire. Owner, tax, map one, lot one, estate of Leo Flurry. Owner, tax, map two, lot two, Leonard Vigent. Location of property is one and two A Charles Bancroft Highway. Map one, lots one and two. Description of property, 5.82 acres of vacant land and 0.344 acre and portion of existing house lot. This is an application for a variance. A variance is requested from Article 700, comma, Section 701 of the zoning ordinance to permit residential use of five lots in the southwestern commercial district.
Thank you very much for that. Attorney Proman, I know that you are here representing the applicant, and I have here a letter.
The letter is dated May 14th, 2014. Leon, oh, your applicant, Len Vigent, requests a continuance to your June 2014 meeting because of the lack of a full board, signed by Andrew Proman, attorney for the applicant.
I left a blank after the June to fill in.
Yeah, I think we're talking the 11th.
Oh.
Could I ask a procedural question?
Son of a...
Yes, please.
It's my birthday.
If we were to go forward, and the vote was two to two, I understand that that would be a denial, is that correct?
Correct.
I think so.
Yeah.
And if it was a denial, would we be able to ask for a motion for reconsideration to the next meeting?
Just based on the lack of the full quorum, you mean?
No.
Yeah.
No.
The answer's no.
No, it wouldn't be based on... You'd have to have some other technical...
New evidence.
Reason, right? Or, right, new evidence, or we erred technically somewhere in our decision.
My hat was broken.
That may work. If you bring a note from your doctor.
I want to build the house for both your daughters.
Don't, don't... Don't tempt me.
I have a question for Andy.
Yes.
Andy, why wasn't the town, or the city of Nashua, also on the list of abudders?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Andrew Proman, Attorney, attorney and proman of Nashua for your applicant, Len Vigent. To answer that last question, because under the regional impact statute in Chapter 36 of our statutes, we have to notify the... If you make a finding of regional impact, which I want to talk about, you have to notify the NRPC and the abutting town. The abutting town in this instance, affected by regional impact, is Hudson. You know, I didn't even look at the map in that regard, it may be that we are technically abutting Merrimack or Nashua on the other side of the river, but they're not affected by regional impact issues.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, if I may... I'm sorry, that was June 11th?
Yes.
Birthday.
Well, that's not good.
I can't tell you how many hearings I've done on my birthday over the years.
Period.
Worst one was like, anniversary. Mr. Chairman, if I could address a few housekeeping matters without getting into the substance of the case. First off, the application that was submitted to you was submitted by Len Vigent in the estate of Leo Flurry. It's because Len Vigent, at the time, owned the big lot out back, and the estate of Leo Flurry, at the time of application, owned the front lot that has the duplex on it that's out there today. Mr. Vigent closed on the front lot yesterday, and so I wanted to provide to you a copy of the fiduciary deed, just to let you know that Mr. Vigent is owner of the entire parcel, both the house lot and the vacant land out back. Alright, so if I could make sure of that.
Interesting. Yeah, I actually had some questions around that, so I guess now I don't even have to ask those questions.
Those questions go away. As a result of that, well, in part as a result of that, I just, again, I'm not going to get into this plan, but I want to make sure you folks have the new plan that I submitted to Kevin this past Monday. And I could hand that out to you, or I could save it for the hearing itself, whatever you want to do, but as a result of two things, as a result of Mr. Vigent acquiring this property, and as a result of Kevin's meeting with the Daltons who are sitting behind us, we changed the road location. We think it's a better plan overall, and I want to make sure you had that plan going into this hearing, I guess, for next time. So you can... I could get it to you now. The plan that you have submitted with the application is not the plan I'm going to be presenting for this hearing.
So what you call the plan, is it just the single map, or is it the entire application has changed as well?
No, it's just the single map, because the substantive nature of the application hasn't changed. We are requesting a residential use in a commercial district, that's not changing. We're just changing the road location and swapping some, a lot layout.
Okay.
So I could... I can hand that to you now if you want. I've shown the Daltons, I've given it to Kevin.
Yep. I don't see why not, we ought to put at least one copy in the file, if you want to keep the rest of the copies for the board for next month, that would be...
Okay.
That would probably be a wise thing to do, I just want to make sure I have the most current information.
This is the plan. So the plan that you have with the original application, you may want to mark, and just, you know, play... You know, supersede it or put a big X on it. Next, Mr. Chairman, is Chapter 36 of our statutes. I would ask the board to declare regional impact. It's a procedural step, but it's an important step for the record, and if, say, for example, we were to prevail on our variance request, and someone could come along and say, well, they never declared regional impact, the regional... Oh, I'm sorry. I have a copy of the statute. It's pretty clear that we have regional impact, because we are right on the town border. There will be school buses and plowing issues to address between the towns, and... There's a copy of the... There's a copy of the statute, I don't know if you have some on there?
One page, or...
Couple, two pages.
Oh, they're stapled already?
Yep.
You're trying to torture me with the small print, huh?
Why don't you bring your glasses?
I'm good, I can hold it out here, I'm pretty good.
Hey, admit it, you need glasses.
I can see it.
Mr. Chairman, I could hold that for you, but it's yours.
I know. Yeah, I get that all the time.
I will tell you that, you know, you folks know I sat on the zoning board, the planning board, for years. I've been presenting to you for years, I've never had a regional impact, either on either side of the table.
Never, never.
It's rare, but it does happen, and what the state legislature has done is said where there are projects that are right on town borders, you should let the other town know, and let the regional planning commission, the local regional planning commission, know. Now, if you look at the application that I submitted, my cover letter, when I went into Kevin Lynch, I requested that he presume regional impact, because I knew it was coming, and so notice, I guess I want to confirm that notice has gone out already to Hudson and to the NRPC.
It's going to Hudson?
Yes.
Yes.
Hudson and I have already had communications about this, and the zoning and people say, what? They don't believe it's a regional impact, they're just saying, this is just another subject.
Well, yeah, we got to follow the process, though.
It's all, it's all, it's all of their...
But, so, yes, you're probably familiar with the application was submitted with all of your labels, so everything that was on there, which included Town of Hudson, Town of Litchfield, regional planning...
They get everything.
They all got the certified notice.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, 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 great.
Can I just ask some questions?
Oh, let me put it this way, the mailings went out.
That's fine.
Okay.
That's all I want.
Certified mail with return receipt.
Just so we dot our i's and cross our t's, if you look at three, 36, colon, 57...
Yep.
Right, Roman numeral two, is this not more than five business days after reaching a decision regarding a development of regional impact? Do you feel that his letter is that decision?
Uh, it can't... I've seen it done both ways. I think better, safer, sorry, now that we have an extra month. I would suggest that you make a, by motion, make a finding of regional impact and send out these meeting minutes out to the NRPC.
And if we did that, then we should pursuant to the statute also send out a copy of the new plan...
Yep.
That was submitted, and all those costs will be...
Well...
Why?
Does it say plans?
Well, there's a local land use board, which is ours, shall submit an initial set of plans, which we... I don't know if that was done, if this plan was actually sent to...
It was not. All I did was send the standard notice.
So then we didn't comply.
I would agree with you that, given this additional time, we should make sure that's done.
Right. And just so you know, even if we did want to go forward, we were really short on that fourteen days, because this is dated April 30th, the statute says fourteen days, today's the 14th, so we just may have snuck in another wire, but just to make you aware of that as well.
Well, that's one thing that I did want to talk about after this case, is just the procedure of how applications come in, but let me finish this off. The final piece of the puzzle for procedural issues is 67453, a copy of which I included with the application, and that's development of land on municipal boundaries, that's in the planning statute, 674, and that requires Kevin, in this instance, your zoning administrator, to send out notice to the town that's affected by a proposed development. This is different from regional impact, it's duplicative, but it's different. And I did speak with Bill Olxak, the zoning administrator in Hudson, and who told me, yeah, I talked to Kevin, what's the problem? So, and so, I just want to let you folks know that we are... This is an unusual case, it's a very unique property, and we have to kind of jump through extra hoops on this one.
I agree, I think that procedurally, in pursuant to the statute, there are a lot of things that we... I want to make sure that the board does properly to ensure his rights.
Yeah.
But the second part, point that you just raised, sounds like it's in Kevin's office, so if you need to document your communication with Hudson, then you'll take care of that, right? Okay.
But he spoke to Bill, into John, their plan.
And all you need to do, if it needs to be a part of the record, is put it in the file.
Yeah.
So that it becomes a part of the record.
Yeah, I'd want to make sure that gets done.
So...
But you're talking to Kevin, though, right?
I'm talking to Kevin right now.
He's not looking at it.
I do want to make sure that gets done. I... When I submitted, I... There was a subsequent email, when I reread the statute, and I said, Kevin, this has to go to Hudson. I copied my Hudson friends on this as well, so they've received it.
Can I just add that your June 11th date may not work, if you look at that same statute in the last provision, says that the building inspector shall notify by certified mail the regional planning commission and the affected municipalities, who shall be provided 30 days to submit comment to the local government body and the building inspector prior to the issuance of any building permit?
A building permit.
Permit, I know, I'm just making you...
Yeah.
So on the record, making you aware of that as well.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that. They've received notice already, and...
Okay.
They won't comment, they've already told me that they're... What we're proposing is an allowed use in Hudson, so they don't see a big deal.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask, there's no issue in Hudson?
It's permitted.
No, I guess one last thing. In... This is a residential district in Hudson, and that piece of the puzzle is going forward, regardless of what Hudson does, excuse me, Litchfield does. So that's an allowed use. We do need to obtain a wetland special exception from Hudson to go through that process, which is a similar process that CONCOM and zoning that we have in Litchfield, but that process is already started. There was a conservation commission meeting last week?
A week from last Sunday.
Okay. So there's already a site walk, so that's moving forward. There's a wetland in the middle of the lot.
The Hudson piece you're referring to is different lots than what we're talking about next month?
Well, technically, it's all one parcel of land.
Okay. With a subdivision.
With a town line going right down the middle.
It's not a property line or anything, it's just a corporate line.
Okay.
I have a question on NRPC. So NRPC was notified, would they, would we expect something written from them, or would they show up? Or we'd be lucky to hear a boo from them?
You won't hear anything from them. They are... I don't want to, you know, say that they won't say anything, but I doubt very much.
Not even their response?
No. I was just curious.
No.
Comment.
Okay, so let's get back to the task at hand. I think we have, we have a question before us, which is, does Bill the Board make a finding that there's regional impact in this case, right? And then if we make that finding that there is, then we have some additional notifications that need to be done ASAP. Do we have any questions or a motion from the board?
I will make a motion that the application, remember the number?
2014-01.
2014-01 has a proposed develop... That the proposed development has potential regional impact, that the Board make that their finding.
And therefore, we have to follow the requirements of...
We can put that in a motion.
3657.
I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four, zero, zero. So we do have some additional steps, I guess, to take here, which I can put on my plate as long as I fully understand what it is we need to do.
Please.
This will, the second, after we make that finding, it says not more than five business days after reaching a decision regarding a development of regional impact, does EPA shall by certified mail furnish the regional planning commission and the affected municipalities with copies of the minutes, which is today's minutes, at which the decision was made. The Board, at the same time, shall submit an initial set of plans to the regional planning commission, the cost which shall be borne by the applicant.
Yeah, I was going to, I was thinking about that. I mean, I don't have a check for the additional mailings, let alone anything else. And I'm leaving for Florida tomorrow for a couple of days, so I can't do anything on this until Saturday.
Well, you have an able staff member sitting in the back of the room who can address these things.
Fire off what you want to be sent out this week. Put it on your computer, send it in, we'll get it out. Okay? Your secretary's not here tonight.
Well, I need the binets, basically, and then you have all the other, you have the drawings.
I have everything. We have effective accounting, go over the regional impact, and they get signed for it.
You're just going to draft a letter?
Yeah.
Couple letters, it says...
Give it to Jen, give it to the right people, and you're done. That's all you do. Be honest with you, they don't even know what to do with this, be honest with you.
No, I understand all that, I just want to make sure that now that we know what we got to do, I got to get it done, and I'm leaving at five o'clock in the morning.
The board was drafted up a letter saying that when the, that the Board voted that there was potential for regional impact, and we're hereby to notify the NRPC, and cannot be any type of delivery, or does that the state, registered mail, or...
Certified mail.
Certified mail?
Has to be certified mail, and you have to have initial set of the plans sent to the regional planning commission.
What you have?
Could I ask you to send that email to them? With, you know, basically, our finding?
Yeah.
If you can just send the minutes, like if you can draft the minutes as quickly as possible, they're going to be pretty clean.
Right.
Yeah. You know, if you can get them out tomorrow, that'd be great. Just send them out to... Send them to everybody, and then Laura can run with it.
Those minutes will not be approved?
No.
That's fine.
Just put them in draft form.
Draft.
If Andy can do it first thing in the morning, too, the letter, if you're all set with it, I'll just go, just make a difference, okay? If that's, if you want to email it to me?
Okay.
And we'll do it from there.
All right. And I suppose if there are some additional costs, we'll have to just let the applicant know, because I don't know what those costs are going to be at this point.
Just one letter?
Give me a couple bucks.
Yeah.
Handwritten.
Certified mail.
Does it have to be certified? Can it be handwritten, and does it do?
Well, it's going to be going to the regional planning and the affected municipalities, which is Hudson. You're saying...
Hudson, Litchfield.
Does it go to Hudson as well?
Well, it says shall furnish the regional planning commission and the affected municipalities with copies of the minutes.
Oh, okay.
So that will be...
Hudson and NRPC.
Hudson, the regional plan, and we're not doing anything with Nashua.
Why not Litchfield? You don't know...
Here.
I mean, I had to send them the notice, too, so...
He knows all about it.
Well, because they were, Litchfield's ain't a butter.
Yeah.
Okay.
In that, yeah, that case.
I thought they were an effective municipality.
No, no, Litchfield owns the property immediately north of this lot, so they were notified as an a butter. You wouldn't notify the own town, your own town as an effective municipality, because you are applying to your town. So the point is to notify Hudson, who may not know about it, so they don't come squawking later in NRPC.
The applicant says in Litchfield's not required, I guess.
That wouldn't make sense, he knows all about it.
We're all know about it.
Send yourself a letter.
The question of whether it's a regional impact, that question came up between discussions between Hudson and ready, and it wasn't, okay? And what practicality is not, it prevents you, okay? Subdivision still... Subdivision is still a community.
So we're just being careful. That's good.
Yeah.
The legislators have done something to make any point.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess in order to finalize on this, you'll take the action, you'll take the action, reduce the minutes as quickly as possible. Get them distributed, make sure Laura's on the distribution list. You'll follow up with something to Kevin that essentially summarizes that we've, are finding?
Well, basically, it's the minutes. I mean, I, we just have to send copies of the minutes.
Okay.
That's it.
And then the plan.
And the plan.
Yeah.
Uh, the plan and anything on my desk.
Alright.
He just wanted to.
It's gonna be like that.
Yeah, because I'm, I'm, I mean, if I could, I'd do it, I'd do it on the road, but I'm in and out. I'm going down to Florida hopefully to buy a car.
Kenny Proman, would you think it'd be wise that we give Mr. Lynch a copy of the plan right now, so we can keep this one in the file?
I have one.
The new one you have?
I, I sent him one down.
Okay.
I have, I got electronic.
Okay.
Okay, um, I think we're in a pretty good spot with that. Did you have anything else with regard to procedural matters on the case itself?
No, just the motion to continue to.
Okay, um, so, we have a request on the table?
Can we hold that for one minute?
Please, go ahead.
Because I want to be sure for you. Should we have a copy of Mr. Lynch's certified letter that was pursuant to subparagraph four of thirty-six fifty-seven in the file as well? Has that been issued, or is that?
Um, you should have a copy of everything in your file.
But I'm saying we do not. So if you read that part of the statute, it's saying that this is the permit portion of the statute. The building inspector shall also notify by certified mail the regional planning commission and the affected municipalities, who shall be provided thirty days to submit comment to the local governing body and the building inspector prior to the issuance of a building permit. And I know we've talked about the building permit.
Yeah.
But that is part of the statute, and I just want to be sure that you're comfortable with however that's being handled right now.
Yes. Anything and everything that's generated from this file should go into this file.
We do not have that.
Okay, well, that's, that's beyond my control.
I think this.
In some respects, so I, that's, I'll, I'll come back. If I can have a minute when we're done this, I want to come back to that.
Okay. So, I need a motion to, um, continue case two thousand and fourteen.
I'll make the motion to continue.
Dash O one.
Two thousand and fourteen dash zero one.
To?
To June eleventh meeting of the ZBA.
June eleventh, seven PM.
Do you have the calendar on the wall on here?
For a second?
We got one right in here. You got one of these?
I'll second it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries four zero zero.
Is it June eleventh?
I hung one up, and I keep one figured.
And I do, I do want to apologize. I know the importance and, and, uh, you know, of everybody's time. And, uh, um, I'll do my best again, and, uh, keep you in the loop as I get closer. Try to get a full quorum out here next, next month.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
Alright, thanks. This is very unique. This property, I appreciate you working the procedure of things.
Yeah. Okay, um, do we want to close, or do you want to just continue?
I do want to close, yeah.
Alright, um, I think we're all set. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I will make a motion, motion to adjourn the meeting at seven forty-five.
I have a motion, second?
I'll second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion to adjourn at seven forty-five.
Have a, a motion?